I'll call the Barch 6 Broken Arrow City Council meeting to order. An invocation, Pastor Rich Meganaro.
If we can bow our heads for a word of prayer, thank you Father God for all the plans that are before us today. Thank you for the prosperity of our city. We look to you for wisdom and guidance with all the decisions today and that your voice will speak to our city council as they face all the complexities of running our city. Please watch over our first responders. Please bless all those who run departments and hold positions of authority. May they do it with the spirit of excellence and be an example of good leadership. Please watch over our city with your hand of protection and mercy. May Broken Arrow be known as a city of peace and unity. We want to keep you first and commit everything discussed here tonight to your will. In the name of your son, the everlasting father and prince of peace, amen.
Roll call please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Please stand and join the Cub Scout PAC. Nine thirty-five is going to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, consideration of the consent agenda. We've had a request to table or to remove and discuss item H. Are there any items to be removed?
We've approved of the consent agenda excluding item H.
Second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. And item H, we had, I guess, Lauren did a presentation on that. There was some question about the traffic. City Councilor Wimpy has a question.
Yeah, I'm just interested in the impact. I saw the traffic study, but if you guys could just go over that a little bit more and discuss like the impact that the additional two hundred and twenty-eight units would have in that area, because I know that's something that might be on our proposed bond issue.
Absolutely.
Mayor and council, Michael Skates, Development Services Director. The traffic impact analysis on development that impact a non-improved roadway, when traffic counts or traffic volume is a hundred vehicles per hour or more, it requires a traffic impact analysis. And this particular development, you know, the traffic counts that they've come up with are slightly higher than a hundred, about a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty-five, depending upon which direction they're going. They ran through and did a traffic analysis. And through that traffic analysis, based on, as engineers, we use the Highway Capacity Manual, which is a federal document that kind of gives us guidelines on traffic counts and different types of volume of how to calculate left turns and then ultimately intersection capacity. In conjunction with that, there's a trip generator that we actually use to look at different types of development. In this case, this is an apartment unit, low-rise, and the consultant, traffic consultant, goes through and looks at that and then takes that information and puts it into a program. You can do it by hand, but it takes a long time. So they use a program called Synchro Ten, and that's a program that maximizes the street volumes based on traffic and then also looks at the capacity at the intersections. Because ultimately, as traffic gets onto the street, the impact is at the intersections. And when you look at the report and the information that's provided, the existing intersection at Albany and Twenty-Third or Sixty-first and County Line has a level of service D. And when you look at the intersection at Fifty-first and County Line, or what we call, it's hard to get them all straight, but that one's a level of service C. And so when they run through there and they do their calculations and stuff, what they found is that the peak hour AM and peak hour PM increased slightly, but the overall impact based on this development doesn't change the level of service at either intersection based on that capacity. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I can kind of go into more detail if you want me to or if you have a specific question.
No, I think that's good.
And so, you know, when we, another thing is when we look at like decel lanes, it's based on left turns going into the development that are over a hundred. In this case, you know, they looked at it, they don't estimate to be over a hundred. But since we're still in the early stages of this development, we may work with the developer to look at that drive and see what we can do to maximize pulling those left turns that are heading northbound, you know, to pull them over into kind of a decel lane so they're not impacting the through traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Any questions or comments from the council?
The only thing I would say, Mayor, if I can please, is that obviously a traffic count is one thing, the perception of the community about the overcapacity of that road is another. And so as we look at the bond propositions, this road, widening of this road, it is included in the package. There is funds to widen the road and there's going to be funds needed to actually to replace and widen the bridge. So the total project, I believe Mr. Schwab can correct me, if you look at the road widens around five, five and a half million dollars, and the bridge could be a like amount. So we could be looking at a ten to eleven million dollar project to complete this mile section. And I think it's very important that this be one of the, from my perspective, be one of the top priorities that the administration has for the council to consider as a part of the package because of how much transportation cars basically use that roadway. So Kenny, is that around the number?
Yeah, that's actually correct. I think Michael Skates may have the number or had earlier, but it, we had closer to, somewhere between eight to ten to, in the bond program to address this.
So this would take, if I'm understanding, take twenty, talking about taking Twenty-Third five-lane, County Line Twenty-Third five-lane, from Albany down to Fifty-first?
Yes, sir. That's one of the project, and the voters previously approved in 2014, as the council knows, is the widening of Albany itself. And that's one of the last projects to be completed in that package. And so we're just going, we're going to have to do that in conjunction. There will be funds for that. And so actually, we could see some improvements at the intersection with those funds, but in terms of addressing the entire roadway, that's going to be something that we won't know if there's going to be funds available for that until this summer. And then we're going to have to look at, Mr. Schwab believes that we will probably have to do the road as one project and the bridge as a separate project, which means we probably should look at addressing the intersections first and then working our way back towards the bridge. And so I want to be clear that I am concerned about two hundred and addition, twenty-eight additional units because of the traffic, but we definitely want to support the development. This is something that will be right at the top of the list for the council to consider as part of the package.
Is the Omaha intersection not a county project that they?
They were looking at doing a turnaround.
It is.
Kind of walks in with what we're trying to do.
Yes, that's correct.
So we'll take it up to Omaha and then the county would complete the?
Absolutely.
Supposedly have it designed right now, that intersection improvement and that road. Supposedly go out to bid soon.
I just wanted the council to make sure that we have a brief discussion about this because of the importance of, most of the complaints we get about traffic are around three or four different areas and this is one of them.
I'd make a motion to approve PUD 273 and BAZ 1995 as recommended by planning commission and staff.
Second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, item seven, public hearings, appeals and presentations. We have consideration, discussion of possible approval and authorization to execute a proclamation declaring the city of Broken Arrow agrees with and supports the Wyland National Mayor's challenge for water conservation. Lauren?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Lauren Wilson, pre-treatment coordinator with the Utilities Department. Tonight, I would like to present for your consideration a proclamation to express the city's participation in the Wyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. If the proclamation is approved, Mayor Thurman will join mayors across the country in asking residents to make a twelve-month commitment to manage water and energy resources more wisely by taking part in the annual challenge and taking the online pledge between April first and thirtieth. The Seventh Annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation is a friendly nonprofit competition between cities across the country that uses a series of online pledges to see which city can be the most water-wise. Residents can pledge to do things such as fix leaky faucets, take shorter showers, use low-flow devices, wash only full loads of laundry and dishes, use energy-efficient appliances, power down to save electricity, use sprinklers wisely, landscape with climate-appropriate plants, sweep instead of hose, recycle, waste less food, and use a refillable water bottle. In addition to individual reductions in water consumption, energy use and pollution, residents can save money and earn a chance to win any of hundreds of great prizes, which include five thousand dollars towards home utility bills and a Toyota RAV4 Hybrid for a deserving local charity. How it works is that residents go to mywaterpledge.com and take a four-step conservation pledge on behalf of the city of Broken Arrow. Once a resident takes the challenge, they can share with hundreds of their friends and family. Residents can even track Broken Arrow standings throughout the month to see if they need to get even more friends and neighbors involved. We hope that residents will play to win. The city with the highest percentage of residents who take the challenge in their population category wins. Cities will compete in five population categories based upon the 2010 census data. Our category is thirty thousand to ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. There is also a classroom edition that allows teachers to make the online pledge to use water more efficiently on behalf of their classes, and it includes eight lesson plans that teach children about the importance of conserving water. There will be a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar prize for each region that will go to one teacher for classroom supplies and another two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar prize that will go to the winning teacher's school. City staff will utilize various communication tools to publicize the pledge for citizens. Messages will include website postings, social media messages, a dedicated social media page for conservation in Broken Arrow, an introduction video featuring the mayor, and an invitation for residents to share videos and photos. The Broken Arrow Communications Department created a video for you to view that will be publicized as Mayor Thurman's participation statement for the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. They've also created a logo that's on the shower timer and brochure that you have in front of you. And if you will, please watch as we play the mayor's introduction video for you now.
Hi, I'm Mayor Craig Thurman. I'd like to take the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. By saving water, our community saves energy, money, and valuable resources. Here are some of the easy ways to save. For example, at my house, I only do a full load of laundry. Usually that's during the weekend after I've collected a week's worth of laundry. I turn off the water when I brush my teeth and shave, not letting water just run down the drain. During the warmer months, I only water the grass when absolutely necessary. It turns a little brown, but it doesn't have to be perfect. I also use a drip irrigation system in my vegetable garden to save water. I have LED light bulbs to save on my electric bill. I also have a tankless hot water heater. That's another way to conserve. Last but not least, I also recycle. As you can see, these are some of the easy things you can do to save water and reduce pollution. Not only are you doing your part for our community, you can win one of hundreds of prizes including utilities paid for a year. Let's show the other cities around the nation how Broken Arrow takes care of our planet. Make your pledge throughout the month of April at mywaterpledge.com. May the best city win.
During last year's challenge, residents from more than forty-eight hundred cities across the United States took part in the challenge by pledging to save over two-point-two billion gallons of water over twelve months. The campaign to promote drought resiliency and water quality ended on April thirtieth with mayors from thirty-eight states vying to see whose city could be the nation's most water-wise. The cities with the highest percentage of residents making the pledges included Laguna Beach, California, Flagstaff, Arizona, Athens, Georgia, Aurora, Colorado, and Dallas, Texas. Overall, residents around the nation, from Anchorage to the Florida Keys, made four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one pledges to change behaviors ranging from fixing home leaks to reducing harmful runoff into local rivers and streams. Now I would like to tell you a little bit about the Wyland Foundation. It was founded in 1993 by environmental artist Robert Wyland, who is best known for his series of one hundred monumental marine life murals. In 2008, twenty-seven years after his quest, the artist and the foundation completed the monumental goal of painting one hundred life-size public marine murals. These murals were painted in life-size dimensions to increase appreciation and understanding for aquatic habitats and the life within. Perhaps mostly, most importantly, they have reshaped attitudes about marine life conservation. Wyland said that we know now that water connects all the countries of the world. Our goal with these projects over the last three decades has been to convey the urgency of conservation issues to the public. The health of our ocean and waterways are in jeopardy, not to mention thousands of marine animals and plants that face extinction if we do nothing. The completed Wyland Walls campaign is one of the largest art-in-public places projects in history spanning five continents, seventeen countries, and seventy-nine cities around the globe. The Wyland Foundation is a nonprofit organization that is actively engaged in teaching millions of students around the country about our ocean, rivers, lakes, streams, and wetlands. The foundation encourages environmental awareness through education programs, public art projects, and community events. I ask that you approve the proclamation declaring support for the participation in the 2018 Wyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation and authorize its execution. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions to Lauren?
Nice job.
You actually do the laundry?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I do my own laundry, yes.
I don't want my wife to see that video because she'll ask me, why can't you do the laundry like the mayor does?
Started doing it when I was fourteen and got used to doing it. So I think it's something that's very important for us to do as a community. It's something that, first time we've been involved in this challenge, and it's something that hopefully we can win. And maybe one of our citizens can get utilities for a year or other prizes that they're giving out. So I just think it's important that we do that and we get as many people as possible sign up. So hopefully everyone in this room will take the pledge.
I'd make a motion to approve the proclamation declaring support for and participation in the 2018 Wyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, roll call please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item six B, consideration or presentation regarding the lane closures for Elm at Broadway Avenue and associated with federal aid railroad project. Tim?
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Tim Robbins. I'm your construction division manager here at the city of Broken Arrow. I'm here to notify you of some pending lane closures coming up on Elm and Broadway just down the street. This is for a project associated with the Union Pacific Railroad and ODOT as a federal aid at-grade crossings project. This is, the work being done at this intersection is very similar to what we just did on the, as part of the Streetscapes project, at the main Union Pacific Railroad intersection. The improvements will be increasing the safety for the transmitting public. We will be installing grade crossing arms and associated with the preemption gear as associated with the signals. So it's, the entire project is emphasizing around safety of at-grade crossings. So how this is going to work, we're going to have a two-phase plan on this, of attack on this. We will be starting on the March the eighth, which will be Thursday this week. We'll be outrolling lane closures on the both northbound and southbound lanes. We'll be out, pushing the lanes out to the outside lanes such that we can work on the inside median. This will last through March fifteenth, approximately six days. We'll have the lanes back open on March fifteenth. The crews will demobilize and then come back starting March twentieth. This will be phase two. We will implement the same traffic control plan as you saw in the first phase as pushing the traffic out. That way we can set the inner arms and finish up any work in there. Then they will come back and do their final leg on March twenty-fourth. This is a Saturday. This leg's going to be a little bit more interesting in the fact that we will be taking and shutting down both southbound lanes of traffic. We will redirect the southbound lanes of traffic into the inside lane of the northbound traffic. So we will still have full fluid traffic, but it will be a little bit more convoluted there just in the fact that all lanes of traffic will be on the northbound section. They will have signalmen out there. They'll have flaggers to facilitate any incidents. Everything will be trafficked, all the traffic control will be implemented such that the flaggers won't be needed, but they will be there irregardless. So that should last from seven AM to seven PM on the twenty-fourth. Everything will be done on Saturday. That's changed since this was issued. We won't be doing any night work just for safety of the railroad crews. It'll all be done during the day. The, we have submitted out notifications to the public through our communications department, and we have also put out traffic signs, message boards, as of Friday last week notifying the traveling public. Any questions?
It sounds like this is a railroad project that they're doing this, and it sounds like it's their schedule also.
Correct. Yes, sir. We will, we will be following it very closely. I have assigned one of my contract administrators to be out there consistently with them to make sure that the citizens of Broken Arrow are taken into consideration with their work and make sure that all of the traveling public is safely taken care of.
How far in either direction do they put the warning signals, nullifying the track? And I say that in light of the fatality they had, that people sometimes don't pay attention to.
Absolutely. There will be a series of three different sections in the notes of council section. You can see the preliminary traffic control submittal. There will be a roadwork ahead, a right lane closed and, or a one-lane road ahead, and then a left lane closed. Those are spaced out per MUTCD standards, and they are implemented by a separate traffic control company. So it's not by Union Pacific, it's actually by RoadSafe who do this every day. And we will review them as they get installed to make sure that they meet per MUTCD standards.
Any more questions, Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, citizens' opportunity to address the council on general topics related to the city business. We don't have anyone signed up, so we'll go to item nine A. Consideration, discussion, possible approval of and authorization to participate in a survey to determine, identify potential historic structures and sites in the city of Broken Arrow, together with the Broken Arrow Built Heritage Preservation Committee and the Oklahoma Historical Society and the State Historic Preservation Office. Norm?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Norm Stevens, economic development coordinator for the city. Recently, myself and other staff members had the opportunity to meet with the Broken Arrow Built Heritage Preservation Committee. And the purpose of the meeting was to discuss historical structures in Broken Arrow and a concern they had about making sure that we are able to preserve the memory of those structures in the event they're going to be changed or they're going to be torn down. What really prompted them to begin conversations with us was explained by Dr. Clarence Oliver when he was advising that he was taking the leadership Broken Arrow group on a tour that he does with each class. And as they were going down Broadway, he was pointing out the W.T. Brooks home, which was the gentleman, one of four people who established the Elim district. And as he was pointing over to where Mr. Brooks' home was, he looked and Mr. Brooks' home was no longer there. And I think it kind of dampened his presentation a little bit. They came to us and they said that they were requesting the city participate with them and contribute towards a survey of historical structures and sites in Broken Arrow. And once again, the purpose of this was to record and preserve the history of Broken Arrow and the value it will create for the city's future. Now, in your fact sheet, you'll say that, see that it says the near-term goal is to record and document historical structures within the old historical areas in Broken Arrow. During the course of meeting with that group, I explained to them that that is exactly what I would recommend to the city manager that we would end up bringing before council, is the documentation of those. In the event that they find out that a structure is going to be removed, that they are able to at least go out, take photographs, perhaps even if possible, go in the house to document what it looks like. The Oklahoma State Historical Preservation Office conducts annual surveys through a matching grant program, and that's a sixty-forty grant. What I advised them in the meeting that I would do is that I would come to the city manager and that I would, if they would provide one hundred structures in the area between Kenosha and Washington Lynn Lane and Elm, that we would, or I would recommend to the city manager that we set back no greater than five thousand dollars as matching funds for that, that grant proposal. They have identified a hundred sites, and the reason we had to move forward is the information had to be provided directly after our meeting. I think we met on like a Thursday or Friday of that week, and the next week by Tuesday, they had to have that information to the historic society. So they sent us the information. Mr. Spurgeon directed me to have a fact sheet prepared and come before you. With that information being said, it is for a match with the Oklahoma Historical Society, not to exceed five thousand dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions or Mr. Spurgeon.
Yes, if I can, Mayor and members of council, let me just add some color to what Mr. Stevens has outlined for you. And we do have, we do have folks in the audience tonight from the Built Heritage and our, in our history museum. We also have a number of folks in the community that are concerned citizens that could be affected by any type of decisions made by the council, so I'm glad to see that we're having this discussion. Just a couple of things I want to mention is, the discussions that took place with members of the group, it started last December, probably about the middle of December, they reached out to council member, excuse me, Vice Mayor Udi. Broken Arrow, I've noticed in three years, is if there's a larger issue, usually that group will contact one of the council members they may know, and they'd like for council members to participate. In this case, it was, it was Vice Mayor Udi. We met with them and we talked about, really about historic preservation and exactly how many structures would be of historical significance left in the downtown area, and the fact that right now there are no regulations in place that would prohibit anybody from tearing down a structure that may be considered to have some level of historic significance, nor are there any regulations that require them to meet any type of standards. And so we discussed, you know, their concerns, and their concerns were elevated as a result of now we have the downtown residential overlay district, which everyone here, I'm sure, would be in agreement, is that the interest in the residential areas of that one square mile are, have, have increased over the last five years, just like development in the commercial area increased several years before that, and there continues to be a considerable amount of interest of continuing to do development on the street as well as off the street. We followed up with a second meeting where a representative from the State Historic Preservation Office attended, which Mr. Stevens mentioned, where we talked further about how to document the, the historical significant structures that exist. And that's when the notion of having the grant presented before you. Now, obviously, spending five thousand dollars falls within the city manager's authority. However, this is a larger issue than just actually applying for a grant. And that's why I felt it was important to come to the city council to have a discussion to find if this is something that the council members would be interested in doing. Having been in this business for thirty years, later this month, I've had the opportunity to work in one of the most historically significant communities in the country previously, and so I understand what a full historic preservation committee or review committee looks like. And from my perspective, there are a lot of positives and negatives. looks like, and from my perspective, there are a lot of positives and negatives to have any type of full-blown committee. Vice Mayor Udi and I, he's probably gonna have some comments here, we made it very clear that that was something that would be very difficult to gain any type of support of having a full, full review committee where, in other, if that was in place by way of ordinance to where property owners have structures would have to get permission to do any type of exterior renovations, or if they tore this, wanted to tear the structure down, that they would have to get permission from the city to do that, and we made it very clear that would be very problematic for the governing body. We did advise that, obviously, there are not that many structures left within the downtown area that have historical significance, and because of the interest in the downtown, we felt like that the first step would be to have the agency that's got the experience come out and determine how many of those do have historical significance, and then bring back that, back to council with the understanding that what I was most comfortable recommending was some type of process where if in fact a structure was going to be demolished, there would be some type of documentation so you could preserve the history at least in that form. Because as we go in time, if some of these are torn down, there's going to be fewer and fewer, and I think we have a responsibility, public-wise, to, to look at preserving our past as we continue to move forward. Now, the challenge here is you're balancing property rights and folks wanting to be able to do everything they want to with their property within other regulations with balancing that with preserving history, and that is, brings out the emotions in a lot of folks, as well as some requirements placed upon the city in managing such a program, which to me, we don't have, don't have the staff or the expertise to do something of that nature, and so there's, there's a lot that would have to, to, to be considered, and I'm not in any, any position to recommend that right now, nor would I, but I do want to have a conversation with the council members about their feelings on having a survey conducted with the understanding the survey would be done from the street. This is not something we're gonna go in anybody's home. This will be done from the street. Secondly, is that public education and the campaign would have to be done by the city where we would have to educate the folks that this is gonna be done, 'cause, tell the police department, for example, 'cause there will be people out on the streets taking pictures and looking at it, and then come back to the council and see if there's an interest in preserving that. And so this is a larger issue than just basically, you know, sixty-forty grant. And so that's why I wanted to make sure we have this discussion. I'm glad we got folks in the audience to hear on both sides of the issue.
Well, I think there's a, a big issue here too also, and as the city manager stated, that we don't have any regulations now that prevent people from tearing down houses. Well, we just spent a lot of money on a downtown redevelopment overlay district to be able to allow people to build different types of structures. We have a company here that does an amazing job, Restore House, and they, they, if someone has a hundred thousand dollar pro, uh, house, and they want to build a four hundred fifty thousand dollar house, Restore House can do that for them, but if they're on this list, then maybe they can't. And I, I just have a real issue with the city telling people what they can and can't do with their property, and under the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, I think that property owners do have rights, along with what, as long as they meet our zoning. So I am concerned about creating a list, you know, if anyone wants their house preserved, I think they should be able to be involved in the survey. I think that they should, it should be a voluntary deal. Everyone that has a property that they want preserved, they should have that ability, and, and I, I am concerned about the concept of a survey starting us down that slope of regulating what people can do, and, you know, it has been stated in the last week that, you know, this, the concept of this is to prevent people from tearing down houses, and I really, you know, some houses, I understand there's a house on this list that's just a shell of a house that's ready to fall down. You know, who's gonna pay to, to renovate that house? The city can't do it, and so I really have a lot of concerns about this. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I think that, you know, and I like historic structures, you know, I actually have one, but that's, that's my office, and I really think it's important to preserve that, but I don't think that we should mandate that on people that, you know, it may not be cost-effective for them to save their house. So I'm concerned about heading in that direction.
So, maybe I'm confused. I thought what we were doing is preserving the historical significance of these houses and not mandating to people what they had or could or couldn't do to them. It was taking a property, for instance, number fifty is Ralph Blaine's childhood home, and for me, having grown up here and knowing the history of a lot of these, the spoke shop, which was Ralph Blaine's dad's mercantile and his brother's shop, and the correlation between all of that, people don't know. I think we owe it, from my perspective, and I agree with you, Mayor, not telling people what they can or can't do, but from the perspective of capturing these historic buildings on film and the historic nature of what businesses started there and how they progressed through time. So when they were torn down, we would have some historical recollection of that. That's what I thought this was. If it's something different from that, then I need to know that as well.
Yeah.
Because I'm certainly in favor of capturing the historical significance of every one of these, but certainly not telling people what they can or can't do with their property.
And, and I agree with everything the mayor and councilman Lester have said, both. This is not, and, and I agree, if this is something different than, than what councilman Lester understood it to be, then I'd wanna know too, because what I understood this to be, and what I expect this to be, is simply photographing and documenting these properties so that when they are torn down, because some of them can't be saved, and those that can, that's up to the owner. If they wanna save it, great. If they don't, that's really their business, 'cause it's their property. But if we can document it so that fifty or a hundred years from now, the structure's gone, that we have photographic evidence of the structure and an understanding of what that structure meant to the community, that's what I'm willing to, I will not vote for something, ever, that would tell someone what they can or can't do with a piece of property. I just won't, because that's, the mayor's right, that's in violation of the, of the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, and frankly, by God, this is Oklahoma. You can't tell me what to do with my property. Having said that, the point is, the point of this, I understood, is, is to understand what a historical, what, if, A, if it's a historical structure, because what we perceive as historical may not really be, or it may indeed be, and two, if it is, to photograph it, and so we understand when that, when and if that property is later demolished, because that's the owner's choice. We have some photographic history of it that tells us what it's supposed to be. I think the, nine times out of ten, I, I agree with, with everything the mayor said, and I don't disagree with anything he said tonight, except one thing. I don't view this as a slippery slope. We determine the slope. This council determines that, and I guess if I, if I'm no longer on the council, I can't say this, but while I'm on the council, and as long as I'm on the council, I would never vote for anything that would take away your right to do with your property what you can under the law. And that's my position. So that, if this is something different than simple documentate, documenting it, I don't want any part of it.
It's not.
But if that's what it is, then that's what I understood we were voting on.
In that meeting, what I told that group is that I would come make the recommendation to the city council, exactly what I've presented to you, in that it is merely documentation of those one hundred houses that they provided, if they're of historical value.
And recording the history of those properties.
Let me just follow up real quick to what Mr. Stevens said, is that right now, all we're asking, asking is the council's support to do a survey, and of those hundred, the first opening paragraph talks about, the, it's called an inventory. So they would go and they'd look at, at what they call inventory-worthy, and they would look to determine, to see of the, if these structures, if there is specific historical significance of these structures. Now, when I spoke to the representative from the Oklahoma Department of our Historic Preservation Office, the last time this survey was done was nineteen ninety-nine, and at that time, there were approximately a hundred and twenty structures that were included. Now, I'm, I'm not sure, and haven't been able to reconcile the hundred versus the hundred and twenty, so there may be other structures that are not on this list that should be on the list to be considered just to be reviewed, but the process that I am aware that is before you is that if in fact council agrees, then we will work with the state's historic preservation office. We will put out an RFP for a qualified company to come in to do the surveys, and then they would determine how many of those, albeit a hundred or a hundred and twenty, come back and hypothetically, they say ninety, have historical significance, the council remains full authority. Just because they have a list doesn't mean we're telling anybody what they can do. In order for us to tell anybody what to do, regardless of what that is, it would require an ordinance of the city council specifically designating or outlining what would be necessary, and we're not even at that point yet. But if, but the ordinance, for me, the only thing I would recommend is that, is that there'd be something that says before you could tear something down, it just needs to be documented. Now, you could do that voluntarily. The council could say, when there's a demolition permit, we'd like for you to go talk to Lori Lewis voluntarily to see if you'd be willing to let them document your property, or you could mandate that by way of ordinance, that all you would do is take pictures or video or take measurements to preserve that record. That's all that we're talking about. But once this survey is completed, it's, it's just a survey of which properties actually met the criteria for the inventory, and then council would have to decide what next steps would be, if any.
At this time, if, I mean, before, like, say Restore House has a property, what is the, do we have a process in place? I mean, if, like, they just took a house down, obviously.
We have a demolition process in place that they have to go through, that they, get all the utilities disconnected, and that they're, what manner in which they're gonna do and so forth, and they have to get a permit from Development Services.
But if it's a historic house, what would, I mean, like, the timeline that we go for now, like, if the house was, if, if the house was purchased and could be torn down for a rebuild, is there?
We have nothing in place right now that if someone wanted to remove a structure that hypothetically could be in the inventory, that structure could be taken down without the city having the ability to ask them. We could always ask them to document that, and that may be something the council wants to consider, is, is, is something to that nature, and that's why until we know what properties would be in the inventory, we can't really say, and that's where, I'm, I'm, I wanna make myself clear is this, is that, I wanna make sure that, that I understand what's, what's being expected, and that is, we wanna document properties that would be removed, and if, there's no way that I would ever recommend any type of full review committee for the very reasons that have been mentioned by the mayor and vice mayor and Councilman Lester so far, and I know you, other two councilmembers haven't spoke yet, but this is really about trying to do the very best we can to document our community's history. That's really what this is, and that's all it is.
I, you know, I, I understand what the mayor is talking about, that slippery slope means you're just starting somewhere. I, I've personally understood exactly what, Norm, what you, you've said, what you've recommended, that we're just putting it down, documenting it, and I know also legally, the only way that we could do anything, or the city would do anything, would be a direction of the city council. I know a lot of cities do have areas. Oklahoma City is one. My son lived in one that was a subdivision that was on, on a historical society. I mean, they didn't do anything in that historical area, and it really looked nice, but all the homes were on even keel to start with. I asked him, did he like it? And he said, yes. He was on the committee to decide on what could be done and not done, and it was anything minute. In fact, he moved here recently to Idaho, and the guy who bought his house bought it to flip it, and the sidewalk was all broken, so he replaced the sidewalk, and he got in trouble, had to tear it out because he didn't make it look old enough. And so they can really get critical if you do it, and I don't wanna see anything like that, especially in homes that some people might want their home on the historical register, some people might not want them on there. So I don't see it hurts anything for us to go ahead and document what's there, but if it goes any further, then it's gotta be the city council, and I for one am not in favor of forcing anybody not to be able to tear their house down, not to, not to pour their sidewalk if they needed to, because these are existing houses. When they moved into those subdivisions in Oklahoma City, and there's a lot of them, they knew going in, it's documented, that it is a historical society, historical neighborhood, and they're not able to do anything unless they go through that, that committee. But I don't see approving this would, certainly wouldn't hurt the city, and it would help, and even if you had some way of knowing whether one was demolished or not, you know, not to tell them they couldn't, but at least to make sure there was some acknowledgement. But from what your recommendations, the same thing I read here, and it was not, the city wasn't gonna get involved in any further than that.
Yes, sir.
But I thought I heard you say an ordinance, creating an ordinance, so that's kinda piqued my interest in that, that if what we're saying is document, but yet we're creating an ordinance to do that, that creates another issue. I, I wonder if, if somebody has to get a permit to demo it, we're not allowing anybody to go on anybody's property, can we not notify this group that this property is, is in for a demolition, and you better go take a picture of it before they do it?
Yeah, that's, that's one way of voluntarily, voluntary asking folks if they would work with, with our History Museum to document, document that. My point about the ordinance was, as Mr. Park said, the only way the city could require anybody to do anything would be by way of ordinance. I mean, we could ask folks to voluntarily have their properties or their structures.
But, but, a property owner can't stop somebody from standing on the sidewalk and taking a picture of the property.
No, I'm referring to further down, after we had the inventory, and say you have these eighty or ninety structures that are identified to be historically significant, we can do that survey, and once we come up with those properties, if there was going to be some requirement to document before demolition, it would, in order to mandate that, the only way that can be done would be by way of legislation of the council.
I guess for me, I need to see exactly what the requirements are gonna be.
Oh, sure, that's why I said that's further down the road, only after you complete the survey.
But I gotta get to that point.
Is that on the slippery slope?
Yeah, that's the slippery slope.
Down the road? I just say that there's not an ordinance involved with this discussion here, and all we're doing is approving them to document that. We're gonna pay the, the matching funds, and, and that's it for now.
And I'm a hundred percent for that.
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're talking about making anyone do anything, that's a whole different discussion and not, and, and not an, and, and would not, I mean, I have no interest in that. What I wanna do, though, is, is be able to know what we have and, and, and let people know the opportunity exists to document it, but, I mean, we can't make people do stuff with their property.
You could if it started from the beginning. You know, if it's subdivisions in Oklahoma City, it works out great. The homes look really nice, and they look dated, the thirties and forties, even to today. You don't see garages closed in, you don't see any of that kinda stuff, so it, it does protect it. But these are houses that scattered all over the city, and it makes it, it makes, it make it difficult.
Well, my concern was when I, when I read the fact sheet, and it said the short-term goal was to do a survey, so I'm wondering what is the long-term goal? There's another goal, if the short-term goal is just to do a survey. So that, that was my concern, was, was the short-term goal, claiming it was gonna be a survey. There's gotta be another goal if that's the short-term goal, so.
And their goal moving forward would be for them to explain what they would like to see. Once again, the only thing that was being brought to this council is for the, the survey.
I mean, the, the way I read and understand it is, whether there's a long-term goal or not, we're the ones who have to set that policy, and I don't know what anyone else's long-term goal is, but my, my goal was to know what we have.
Yes, sir.
And, and to the extent we can preserve it, the, the, as Councilman Lester put it, the memory of it and, and, and the, the importance of it for review for posterity is fine, but we're not, my understanding is we're not talking anything more beyond that at this point.
No.
And, and if there's another point B, this council would have to decide that, and I think everyone can get a sense of where this council's sent.
Yes. If the historical committee down the road wants to do something different, it would come back through to you all. That is not what they've expressed to me that they want to do.
I think it's a great project. Thanks, it's a great project.
Any more discussion?
I didn't see a motion.
That's one there.
I'd make a motion, make a motion to approve and authorize participation in a survey to determine and identify potential historic structures and sites in the city of Broken Arrow.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Abstain. Okay, next we have, we don't have any previous ordinances, remarks, and inquiries by governor and body members. Any remarks or inquiries?
I think as we finished up our series of meetings on the bond issue, I think in my years on the council, this is absolutely the best process that we've been through. Got the best remarks from citizens on the process and the involvement that we gave the citizens, and got a lot of comments, not a lot, got several comments on things that weren't on there, that gave us an opportunity to think about those type of issues as we move forward, so I want to thank you, Michael, and the staff for putting that together.
Thanks, sir.
And I think it was very good, we had a lot of good comments, I had a lot of people come and say, I probably had three projects they said eliminate, everyone said do more roads, it's going to be hard to do it, so even got a few comments about trash bags, so.
Yeah, just a few.
Yeah, I think that was, it was very good to do. So, anything else?
Item thirteen, remarks and updates by city manager, including the recognition of a recent accomplishment by Poison Lake officials.
All right, good evening, Mayor, and once again, council members, just a few things. I sent you an email earlier this afternoon, letting you know they got an update from the engineering construction director and parks director, that it's looking as if our dog park should be open sometime in the early part of April, so we'll be doing some type of ribbon-cutting ceremony, very excited about that, we get questions about that all the time. I'll let you know when we know more, when the exact dates are going to be. Just to follow up on the comments about the public forums, the statistics I received is we had around a hundred individuals come to each one of those meetings, and I want to take this opportunity to, to thank the directors, the staff members, because there was obviously a lot of work that was put into making sure that it was a very engaging process, and I want to thank the council members for, for attending the meetings, I think it's important that they hear from you, and they did, and now begins the process, in fact, there's going to be a meeting tomorrow, right after the leadership team meeting, to begin the process of how we will go about paring down the, the projects from the $280 million that we're at right now, to at least under $210 million. At that point, I'm going to have to need to have a meeting with the council members to get some direction regarding exactly what size of an issuance or package you would like to see, because if in fact it's not the ten years, then if you say it's the five or seven years, and then we'll have to go back and do some further reductions in the proposed package. Now, because we had so many folks come out to moving forward in time, a month or so, because we had so many folks come out, I feel like it would be important that, once we get it down to a preliminary package, hypothetically, if council said we're going to go for the full, Angelotta, proverbially speaking, the two, two-ten for ten years, I think it's important to go back to the community one more time, before you actually take a formal vote on it, and actually show them what's, what's, what's in, and also what will not be in, and let the folks comment on what will both be in and be out, and then you'll have that information, because right now, we're compiling the comments we received from all three meetings, and so you're going to get a report that basically outlines for you what those priorities were, we're going to be looking at those as we start to look at the priorities for the package. So probably sometime around the middle of April, we'd be looking at another public, public meeting in a similar format, but to focus on what would be in and what would not be in, potentially, and then we're going to turn it over to, to legal, essentially, to begin putting together the language and making that determination, how many actual packages will be needed for the project. Last time, for many of you remember, there were actually seven propositions or packages, there was eight, actually, with the, with the sales tax, or the tourism tax, but there will be probably one package that will be the reappropriation of some, some funds for maybe a project or two that are going to need to be reconsidered. So, we'll start that process, and we want to make sure we dot all the i's and cross with the t's, and our goal is to still present you with the package sometime, I would say, the second meeting in May, to give you plenty of time, we have to get it done by the middle of June, so that gives us at least two meetings before, without any special means, before we have to do so. So I just want to thank all the council members and staff once again. I understand the Home and Association Saturday was outstanding, had great participation, want to thank Michael Skates and his team, and all the directors that came out. Also, Beth Ann wanted me to remind the council members that we are very close to submitting to you the official statement for the city in regards to the issuance of bonds, and we're asking the council members to set aside a little bit of time to look at the official statement, and make sure that you're comfortable with it, and, and that way, if you have any questions, we can address those questions, because it's looking right now, based on the decisions made last fall, we should be in a position to, to complete the process to have funds sometime in May, as it's looking, and that's a part of the 2014 general obligation bond package. So, we'll keep you posted on that, but there's, very important to take a look at that, the, the information that's going to be in there. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions the council members may have, otherwise, I appreciate your, all the time that you've put into the bond project so far, had a good meeting with Rotary yesterday, a lot of support from the Rotarians on what the city's trying to do, and so, we just want to put forward the best package we can to the community, because the mayor's, and I've talked a couple of times, it is going to be difficult to cut $70 million. If council said something less, then it's going to be even more difficult, because I don't think there's a project in there that's not worthy, and unfortunately, it can't be all roads. I mean, if we did all roads five years from now, people will be screaming, when are we going to do park improvements? You know, so it's finding the right balance between quality of life, city facilities, and streets, which will dominate it, so we can be looking for your input as we go forward. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we do have a executive session, so I entertain a motion for a brief recess to go into Bama and Beta.
So move.
Second. Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority meeting to order, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Item three, consideration of the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed?
Move for approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We have no public hearings, appeals, or presentations, general authority business, six A, approval and authorization to accept a proposal from Penco, Inc., to extend the forty-five day chemical feed pilot program for odor control. Anthony Daniel.
Good evening, Chairman, and authority members and staff. What we have before you is a request to continue the odor control project that we started in, on the first week of January. I'd like to give a little bit background and the, and the results of the test itself. How it all got started was back in fall of October 12th of 2017, we had a meeting with the citizens who live along County Line Road, who complained about sewer gases, and they were not able to enjoy the outdoors and leave the windows open and so forth. So we met at the Grace Community Church, the staff, city manager, and Vice Mayor Scott Woody was there, and we did share with the residents our long-term project that we have to replace the entire line, but the question was asked, what are you going to do in the interim? So we suggested, one option was to do a chemical feed system, it has proven to be successful in other parts of the country, so I was told to proceed, and I contacted Penco, Inc., to come out and do some field survey and tests, and so they were out there on the 26th and 27th of October, we walked the entire line from Ninety-first Street all the way to the wastewater treatment plant, we opened up manholes, collected air samples for hydrogen sulfide levels, and we logged them, and what we found was, especially at 101 and County Line Road, the sewer line dropped about fifteen feet, the floor, so as it drops, the turbulence created the release of hydrogen sulfide gas, and hydrogen sulfide is heavier than air, so there's more gas down there, what's being released, and that time, it was around eighty parts per million. Anything above three smells rotten egg to a human nose. So then we took more samples, and we, they used a device called an odor logger, which is like a bottle, they lowered into the manhole, and we left two of them overnight, and we came back the next morning, and we collected the data, and they, we suggested that we do a forty-five day pilot program. So at the December, at the December fifth meeting, you all approved a pilot program, and Penco mobilized, and installed a bulk storage chemical tank at the 101st lift station along Seventy-first Street, and they dropped two of these odorloggers at manholes at 101st and one further south along Jasper. How it works is, these two odorloggers, they collect the data and send it to the cloud, and the Penco technician, the engineer can monitor what the H2S levels are, and they can dial in the required chemical dosage. So on January third, we started feeding the chemicals, using a baseline of sixty-two parts per million H2S at 101st manhole structure, and was fourteen at the eighty-five-eleven South Ninth Street manhole, and we had to start with a high feed of four hundred gallons an hour, and a day, sorry, because we had to shock-load the slimy bacteria layer that's already in the pipe, that's producing the H2S gas, and then we dialed down to three hundred forty gallons the week of June, January tenth, and unfortunately, the week of fifteenth, the big freeze we had, and all the chemical lines froze, so we had to shut down for a week, and they taped the line, insulated it, and restarted the program on January twenty-third, and we started with three hundred gallons, by which time, the hydrogen sulfide level had dropped to nine parts, and about eighty percent drop in the hydrogen sulfide level overall. And then we continued to drop down to two hundred twenty-five gallons, and today is this week when the forty-five day pilot program comes to an end, and we are feeding our one hundred eighty gallons per day. We're trying to optimize so that we don't overfeed, we want to keep a little bit of the bad egg smell, and the request today is to continue the program till mid-July, and between now and July, we will revisit and see, explore whether there's any other cheaper options, or we just continue with this chemical feed till the line is completely replaced. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, sir.
Any questions, Beth?
Once the line is replaced, what will cause it, what will keep it from building up then? Is it not going to be dropping like that?
No, I think the way their line profile is, there shouldn't be much drop, and if it all drops, then what they do is, they normally add carbon canister columns at the manhole, so as the air is vented out, it's supposed to absorb the hydrogen sulfide gas, but these are, you know, especially during low flows at night, that's when it's all the cooking taking place. So in the morning, when the flow picks up, the turbulence caused, and all the hydrogen sulfide, what happens is, at 101st, it drops, releases, and then as it flows further down towards the plant, the flow, the velocity reduces, it becomes septic again, and more hydrogen sulfide is released at Jasper. So, you know, it's released, cooks again, released. So this has got to be continued, so that we have friends along County Line then.
Yeah. Well, and, and I would point out that I, I didn't realize this was a problem until a resident called me rather emphatic about the problem and the smell, and so I appreciate the city manager, and assistant city manager, and Anthony for setting up that meeting, because we learned, in fact, that night, I, when I went to attend the meeting, was graced by the smell, and could not deny its existence, but I appreciate the fact that we've been proactive in, in addressing it, and I know the citizens do as well, and, I mean, for my part, I think, given the odor problems which are significant, this is, this is an important program to continue, until we can figure out another option.
Thank you, sir.
I think it is a good program, and I have someone that texts me regularly, and doesn't have your text yet, maybe I can give her your number.
Don't fill the need.
But every time that there's an odor issue, and Mr. Gale knows, because I've always sent in him copies of the text when I get them, so I think this is a good, this is a, a good project. Have any more discussion?
I make a motion, we approve and accept the proposal from Penco, Incorporated, to continue with the chemical feed pilot program for odor control along the county line sewer trunk line.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We have no executive session, need another motion?
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Economic Development Authority meeting to order, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Item three is consent agenda, there's one item, may anyone want it removed?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. There's no general authority business, no executive session?
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We do have an executive session, we're back in regular session, city council meeting, I would entertain a motion for a brief recess to clear the room for executive sessions.
So move.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?